I'd like to call to order this work session of the Boulder Valley School District on April 19th. Laura, can you call the roll, please?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Niznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sergeant. Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
So I believe the first item on our agenda is our enrollment outlook. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Anderson, and you can do the introductions.
Yes, please. Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, board members. We have two big presentations this evening. First, our enrollment outlook and talking a little bit about declining enrollment and some ideas around that and some path for us to hopefully begin to start to get some direction, move forward, and then our preliminary budget. And so, two big presentations. And I'm going to start by kicking off our enrollment outlook presentation. So I'm trying to...I think Glenn, are you driving? As Glenn is getting set up, board members, I think that you know and understand the complexities that go into thinking about enrollment and all of the aspects that feed into enrollment in the Boulder Valley School District. I know that over the course of the past two years, that together as a governance team, we've tackled some incredibly challenging tasks. From COVID-19 to fires to just navigating the complexities of implementing a five-year strategic plan amidst all of that. And I would gather that this will be as difficult of a thing that we have had to do, which is really start to begin to unwind everything that fits into enrollment to create a path forward that allows us to be the very best school district that we want to be. Next slide, Glenn. So, as we think about the big picture, this isn't a new issue, board members. I will tell you that as we were preparing for this slide, Rob Price was able to show me this ditto from 2003, which talks about the District Facilities Planning Committee that was formed by the Board at the time of December 2002, to talk about this very topic, right? So here we are, 19 years later, still thinking about this idea of declining enrollment, thinking about what do we need to do to create strategy and systems around declining enrollment, considering that when enrollment declines, there's budget reductions. We know that there's inefficiencies in operations. And then finally, and most impactfully, that schools have the potential over time, and we're going to share with you some enrollment outlooks, that there could be...the experience that kids are getting in these smaller schools with smaller populations won't meet, I think, the standard we set for schools in BVSD. So, really, really complicated scenario. We've got Glenn Segrew here, Robin Fernandez, Bill, and I will also jump in on the presentation and certainly stop us at any point in time if you want to have discussion. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation back over to Glenn.
Thank you. I'm going to go start off going over some of the enrollment patterns and what that looks like going out into the future, a little more depth, a little different look than we do in the fall. So first, to get a little bit of perspective, you know, there are county, state, national trends around enrollment decline and births, for that matter. Boulder County itself, you can see, this would include all of Boulder County, including parts outside of our district. In terms of student-aged children, has been in decline for a while. You may want to note that scale on the side is adjusted a little bit, so it shows it highlights the decline. But that's also true with state. We can see some declines, slightly different pattern, but generally the same. And also, the federal level as well. Enrollment has been going down over this last decade or so. And for BVSD, you know, this starts with kindergarteners. That has been in decline in the last 10 years, almost every year. Certainly, the last two years, we've seen some big changes with COVID enrollment. But even before that, there's been a slow slide in kindergarteners. And that's, you know, really the fundamentals of what we're seeing as those small kindergarten classes are filtering up through the system. That causes overall decline as well. So the last 10 years, we see a period of growth early on in the decade, climbing up for a bit, but really starting to level off by around 2014. Some slight growth here and there, some slight declines, and then starting to slip more recently into a little bit steeper decline. And we expect that to increase just a little bit in the coming years. We see at elementary level, that slip really started about 2016. Already occurred, and then that's filtering out through the middle school levels and high schools now, and some of the smaller classes are now reaching high schools. So that's why we can say, going out in the future, we'll see continued district-wide decline. Going out five years or so, when we look at this, as I said, those smaller cohorts are filtering up. Elementary level, there's a little bit of shakeup here with COVID and recovery and things like that, where we see some leveling in elementary for a little while. But we do expect after that shakes out, that decline, slow decline to continue. But those small classes are filtering up, middle and high. High schools graduating out of very, very large class this year. So, and there's a very small class, eighth grade class coming up. So, and that's the kind of trend we'll be seeing at the high school level as well, coming up. So that will bring overall enrollment levels down as well.
Is there a time that you can say we're not going to be impacted by COVID anymore?
If I had to give you a date, I'd say 10 years maybe, but, you know, three, four, five years, we hope to really be through it. But I think there's going to be some lasting impacts, too. I mean, it's shaken up the economics, the job market, housing market, and all of those things. But, you know, I think in terms of some of the students, you know, we lost a lot of students. We got a few of them back, you know, from 2020. There's probably still a few out there. We'll have to see what their decisions are going forward in the future. But, yeah, it's actually just really creates a lot of uncertainty, especially in the next two, three, four years.
And are you seeing that in other districts as well? That kind of long tail to COVID and the impact?
You know, that's a good question. I haven't had that discussion since pandemic really started with the other districts. We've been pretty focused on trying to sort things out on our own. I know initially, a lot of the hit was very much the same. The patterns were very, very similar. And I would imagine those patterns, you know, they're seeing very similar patterns in terms of what kids are doing as we are.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you. Looking at the five-year projections, are we basing these on the idea of the current housing stock in Boulder? Or are we also taking into account some of the proposals and things being worked on with expansion of housing density in the East Boulder area, among others?
Yes, this includes new housing in Erie, including Parkdale, and their estimates on when they think those will come online. So actually, you know, Parkdale is the biggest development coming online in Erie. And, you know, they'll still take a few years to get started. I mean, they'll start houses this summer, but it takes a while to get the marketing and everything kind of working, and you start seeing significant numbers coming out of that.
Okay.
So another look at enrollment trends, this time by our networks, our district-wide networks, with the East County being Greenfield, Lafayette, Erie in the dark blue, Northwest in the medium blue, and Southwest, which is more South Boulder and Superior, and Lewisville in the lighter blue. And in the past trends, we've seen the...of course, the East has had some increases with the new rooftops that we see in Lafayette and Erie. We see the other two on a small growth trend early on, but leveling off and declining like we've seen overall as well. It started a little bit earlier in the Southwest, but in 2016. But the year following, the Northwest started a similar pattern of decline as well. And of course, that's exasperated the last two years. And looking at projections for those networks out another five years, you know, we see a similar pattern, perhaps a little more leveling out in the East. There is some rooftops and some slight growth, but nothing really dramatic, I think. And continued gradual decline for the Southwest, and maybe slightly less gradual in the Northwest. So causes of declining enrollment, of course, declining birth rates has been a big, big thing people have been looking at, and that's national, state, and local. We're experiencing it everywhere. And of course, that means fewer kindergarteners, similar to that first slide that I showed. Continued COVID-19 impacts, that's affected migration, people coming in and out of the district and housing, but also created some shifts for students to online, private, or other programs, otherwise outside the district. Dwindling housing opportunities, partly due to low inventory, which is particularly acute right now. Of course, that's reflected in the prices we're seeing, especially in Boulder. But we also have overall things that we're seeing, such as aging population and resulting high housing costs. The little chart on the side shows BVSD population for the last three census, so 2000, 2010, and 2020. And you can see the percent of 60 and over has gone up and is expected to go up over time. So, as a population ages, a lot of those people are expected to age in place, since this is a place people like to live. So, that occupies a lot of housing stock. Yeah, Lisa?
Do we know how many students we anticipate losing in the next few years from Marshall Fire displacement? I think several of them stayed in with McKinney-Bento this year, but are looking at other districts next year. Is that correct? And is that figured in, as well as the rebuilding of the Marshall Fire area?
In terms of the overall projections out for the next five years or so, we haven't really...it's not a big enough impact, I think, for overall projections, but it'll definitely hit specific schools. So I think the population to look at with the fire are the 500 or so homes who are actually burned down. There's a lot of other displacement that we're hoping will be coming back over the summer as their homes are repaired.
So for the housing that's being built in Erie, are they building, say, entry-level houses? Are they building bigger houses? I heard a report today on, just in general, that builders are building bigger houses because people are demanding it because they want to work from home, which is edging out first-time buyers. So I'm wondering if how that applies to Erie?
Yeah, that's a good question. A lot of those things really filter out very close to when they start building, depending on the conditions. Home builders can switch very quickly, depending on the market. My impression has been they are doing some duplex units, so they are addressing some of the entry-level type housing. But the other units are probably more mid-size, what would be considered mid-range, you know, for this area, which probably still isn't, you know, terribly cheap for at least young families.
They said the average size of houses being built is 2,800 and some square feet.
Yeah. And then, yeah, the other thing, too, is with... Sorry?
A quick question on the decline, declining enrollment causes. Do you know, like, for example, you have the East Boulder, the East, Northwest, and Southwest. Do you know where the aging population is impacting most?
Definitely Boulder has, I would say, the highest concentration. I've been looking for the latest census to really produce those numbers at a very small level, the census block level, and then we can really go through and find where the highest concentrations are. But at this point, they haven't produced that data. And the flip side to the housing, too, is just the housing in the surrounding areas that is more competitive and possibly more attainable by a lot of the families that do want to move to the district. And so Boulder may be a draw for employment, but whether they settle within our boundaries can be a different issue.
And do you have, in terms of the people that are moving in, people that are moving out, do you have that broken down by ethnicity or any of that information?
Boy, that would be great data to have, new move-ins and move-outs. I've never seen anything that's that specific. Some people try to use registration, like car registrations, things like that, to show new move-ins. I haven't seen anything that's actually better than looking at our own student data, which isn't a survey or, you know, it's ours and we can control it. But I certainly look for every source I can that does show in-migration, out-migration.
Because anecdotally, I know that many Latino families are moving out of Boulder and moving to Longmont, for example, or outlying areas because obviously the cost of housing is super, super expensive here, so. I'm wondering if you have that for other ethnic groups or not?
You know, just, yeah, not by specific housing and stuff, but I do show that chart in the November or the November-December enrollment presentation of new students and students leaving. And that's the best I've been able to find to get at that, that pattern of how many people are coming and going.
So, just real briefly on the budget side impacts. So the first couple of bullet points, or first three, I would say, I've referenced pretty regularly in various budget updates and presentations. 1% drop in student enrollment, about 300 students, about a $3 million loss. With the averaging and the way the Finance Act works, it does smooth that decline over time, so it's not quite as abrupt as experiencing that in one year. With 300 students is about 12 classroom teachers within the standard staffing formulas. The other real impacts come from those nonlinear kind of allocations where administration, operational support, utilities, custodians, those kind of building-specific budget costs are really much slower to be adjusted than direct services to students. So the question that has been posed in the past is, you know, what is the optimal school size to get those economies of scale and improve the student and staff experience? It's not very difficult to say, you know, with a larger school, you're spreading the fixed costs over more students. So, a larger school is more efficient and won't necessarily see larger class sizes. I think that's an urban legend, that a larger school has large class sizes. That's actually kind of the opposite, where you have the ability to have better average class sizes. So, we don't really answer the question of what is the optimal school size from a budget standpoint, because there are more, I'd say, more impactful and more important things than just the budget side of that. And with that, I will turn it over to Robin.
Can I ask Bill a question on the budget impacts? The budget impacts, as we see them here, is that for next school year? Or is that generally?
No, no, just a general sort of, yeah.
Quick question. It says, you know, 1% drop in enrollment. What's our average percentage drop in enrollment per year right now?
Well, we were looking at about 200 students, so less than 1%. We were three-quarter, half-ish. And I think that's the projection into the near future. We had the severe drop, a little recovery, and now we're kind of back into that 200-ish student.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. So it's less than 1% drop per year at this point?
So, a question that I am often asked is, especially at the elementary level, why do we worry about small schools? Because on the surface, a small school sounds like a wonderful thing. It's a great opportunity to develop close relationships with kids, and it's easier to establish a cohesive sense of community. However, on the same token, what we want to do for all schools, all students in all schools, is to provide every component that makes up the comprehensive elementary experience. And that gets more and more challenging as schools get smaller. And so I'm going to share a bit of the complexity around the ripple effects of what happens as schools get smaller. As a point of reference, traditionally, the majority of our elementary schools were three-round schools, meaning three classes at each grade level. And so therefore, in BVSD, that is our sweet spot because many of our structures were created in reference to our standard school size. And so, until the not-so-distant past, most of our schools were three-round schools, with some trending a little bit toward four rounds. However, all of our schools basically are three-round trending to two-round, possibly trending toward one round. And so there are implications of that. And so, you will recall when we did all of the work around the ABC specials rotation, and that language was written into our BVEA agreement, where in a three-round school, you have a full-time art, music, and PE teacher. And so not only does that provide consistent specials instruction for all students across all schools, it also allows, in a three-round school, for there to be common planning time for each grade-level team. And we know, we've talked about over time, the importance of grade-level teams being able to collaborate on their instruction. In addition, in fifth grade, it allows us to offer both woodwinds and string instruments and instrumental music, so that students do have that choice. And so our three-round school structure is ideal for programming. However, as a school moves from being a three-round school to a two-round school in terms of specials, art, music, and PE, instead of having a full-time teacher based just in that school, then suddenly, those teachers have to travel. And so what happens then is for school staffs to plan their master schedules, instead of their academic choices anchoring the way in which they develop their schedules, they can't say, gosh, we really think prime learning time for literacy would be from X time to X time. They have to create their schools, saying, okay, what time of day can the art, music, and PE teachers that we share with another school be here? So, the academic decisions then become driven by scheduling limitations. And there are additional programming limitations at schools as that occurs, too. And so then, once two-round schools then trend toward one-round schools, those limitations become even more severe. And so, a specials teacher who used to travel between two schools now sometimes travels among three or more schools. And so then, three or more schools then are building their master schedules based on tighter and tighter scheduling restrictions. And again, so those academic decisions are being made based on that. And in two-round, one-round, or smaller schools, our teachers are not having common plan with each other because that is created by the ABC rotation. In addition, there is extremely limited teacher collaboration as you get to a one-round school, because each teacher has to teach in an island, as an island. And so they don't have one, or two, or more teammates with whom to collaborate. In addition, as our schools get smaller and we trend toward one-round schools, there's just not enough elbow room when there's just one class at each grade level. So if you think about twins that parents might want to separate between two classes, or sometimes we know that certain students just do better, either not being in the same class with another student or just do better with a certain teacher versus another. And our one-round schools just don't have that type of flexibility. And so then, in general, those programming limitations that I mentioned a moment ago become even more constricting when we get to a one-round school. And the most extreme version, then, is a school that does not have enough students for one class at each grade level. And then they're forced to multi-age, meaning, like, instead of having a first-grade class and a second-grade class, you have a combination class that of first graders and second graders. And there are increasing issues in that sense as well, because those combinations tend to change year by year. So one year, a teacher is teaching second grade. The next year may be a first-second combo. The next year may be a first grade, depending on the enrollment of that student. They also work as islands, in the sense that they don't have, like, colleagues in their buildings with whom to collaborate. And they really struggle trying to figure out, okay, I have two different grade levels of students, two different grade levels of Colorado State standards, and two different levels of developmental appropriateness. And then they have to figure out how to meet all of their students' needs in that type of environment. So it becomes even more complex as it becomes more restrictive. And so those are just a few of the complexities that then are the ripple effects as that occurs. Yes?
Three schools that are multi-grade, Jamestown, Gold Hill, and Flatirons, is that right?
Well, we have different schools that over time, Flatirons has multi-aged in the past. Netherlands Elementary as well, most recently, that have multi-aged. And you move in and out of it, which is also an issue, too, because depending on the enrollment in any given year, sometimes the school multi-ages, in which case, a teacher spends a lot of time planning and figuring out how to do that. And then the next year, they don't. And then the next year, they do. So that tends to vary quite a bit over time. Community Montessori, and of course, Meadowlark, which do so as part of their programmatic model. Richard?
So, on the chart, are these little figures here representing a school? Or is that just randomly put on there? Because how many three-round schools do we have? How many two-round schools do we have? And how many one-round schools are there?
Sure, so those are random, in that sense. That the graphic is, really, the purpose is just to depict what a three-round school is versus a two versus a one, et cetera. And so now, at this point, the majority of our elementary schools have two rounds at many of their grade levels. So we don't have, for the most part, purely three-round, purely two-round, or purely one-round. Because as enrollment decreases, it doesn't decrease equally in all grade levels. So very often, what we see is third grade has two classes, second grade has three, third grade has two, you know, fourth grade has two, fifth grade has three, like that. And so now, that makes it even more complex.
Thanks. I, you know, it's been so great going to these elementary school visits. And I think I've had the chance to visit 15 to 20 of the elementary schools with Rob. And I just wanted to underscore what you're saying, and for folks listening, one thing we've heard about so much as well are issues around needing interventionists, needing elevated programming, needed gifted and talented teachers, sped interventions, et cetera. And how with these larger schools, it's easy and achievable. And these smaller schools, while we're going out of our way to find creative solutions, and I'm excited about that, it does seem like there may be a point where we're trying to solve more problems than we need to.
Excuse me, say, piggybacking on that, attending some of the BVPA, BVCEA negotiations, one thing that they're asking for is hours. And there, I mean, if we don't need as many pairs because we don't have as many students, that becomes challenging as well. As a parent of kiddos that started elementary school in a four-round school and are now a three-round school, I've felt a lot of the challenges you're speaking to. And I wonder how many schools, if you could provide information, on how many schools were originally built in a four-round or three-round schools, and which ones are now within an average range of a two-round, one-round, three-round program? within an average range of a two-round, one-round, three-round program across our district? Because I think there is some variability. Some of the schools in Broomfield being a little bit smaller, but East County kind of feeling like it's trending up. And what does that look like as we think about plans moving forward, facilities mixed with some of these programmatic challenges and opportunities?
So, just to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So the information that you're asking for is schools that were established originally with a certain number of rounds in mind, that now have a smaller number of rounds?
So let me clarify. So we couldn't, if we had schools that were established as a two-round school, we cannot expect them to become a three-round school, because there's not space, unless we did some remodeling or expanded in some way. Likewise, if we have a four-round school that feels, was established as a four-round school, is now a two-round school, and it feels like a ghost town. So just an understanding of where some of, where our schools were intended when they were built, and then where are they now? Does that make sense, thinking about this system as a whole, and how it can operate within those conditions?
Sure. And to me, that really speaks to the capacity issue that Glenn studies very closely, is the capacity that buildings were originally built to accommodate, and the current capacity within that neighborhood.
Right. Would you agree?
Yeah. You know, it'd be very difficult to necessarily track down the original intent for the schools, because we've had so many schools that have been added to over the years. But we can certainly look at current capacity and compare that to three rounds, two rounds. Three rounds is, what, 450 kids? So we can compare it to that.
So this is not an easy problem to solve. Again, since 2001, as this ditto would demonstrate. And board members, as we've gone out to elementary schools, I think we've heard the stresses this is causing on our schools, to Lisa's point. Where the smaller the school gets, it compounds some of the other issues as well. So, other things that make this even more complicated, you know, we're not just dealing with shrinking neighborhood schools, right? We have a school community here in the Boulder Valley School District where approximately one in three parents sends their kids to a school that is not their neighborhood school, right? We have, certainly, we have policies, we have charter school laws and charter schools that sit and exist within our system. We, you know, Glenn has touched on this, the availability of affordable housing in our community is slim to none. And the turnover in our housing with so many of our community members aging in place, not to mention the rising housing prices. I just think in my community, where, I mean, in a year's time, homes are selling for $100, $200,000 more each year. We know birth rates are down here, across the country, and across the state. And so we know that all of these things make this incredibly complicated. And then, thinking about how it's hitting our school system in unequal ways, where we're thinking about, today, we're talking about declining enrollment, and as we think about what we were talking about a few weeks ago, we're saying, "We need a new school for Parkdale," right? And the mixed messages that it sends, I think, to our community by talking about we're growing and shrinking at the exact same time, I think just compounds the complexity. I don't know if you wanted to say anything else on that last bullet, Glenn? So, next steps. So our team has thought through what some practical next steps would be to begin to start to unravel and un-narble this huge knot of a problem that we have. And so I'll turn the presentation back over to Glenn to talk about the idea that we'd propose. Before I do that, I'll hear from Lisa.
Sorry. But I am curious about open enrollment. I don't think we have this information today, but I would love to understand more when we're talking about that one in three students. How many of those are charter schools? How many of them are magnet schools? And for folks that are going to a different neighborhood school, my assumption anecdotally has been that it's often that folks are choosing a school that is actually closer in proximity to their house than their neighborhood school, or that makes their transportation easier. But I don't know if we have a breakdown of reasons why people are going to neighborhood schools other than their own. And I think as we look at this open enrollment issue, I'd love more information on all of it.
Sure. I do know that we produce an annual report that will tell, that we can present to the board from last year, what school a kid's zone to and what school they're going to. But I don't know that we've dug in on the why. We haven't asked people why. That's not part of the open enrollment experience. Is that correct, Glenn?
Yeah. We produce the Open Enrollment Matrix that is on the Planning and Engineering website, and that's got that for the years back. That is a snapshot, so it's hard to get the trends out of it. But you can certainly see on any given year which schools are receiving and sending out kids from that.
Thanks. Yeah, I'd be happy to relook at whatever we've seen before, and I'd love to discuss it more. I think specifically, I'm less interested in why somebody might choose one neighborhood school over another, and more interested in what the transportation impacts are looking like, and whether these are schools that are reasonably close to a person's home or to their work, or whether we have people who are adding significant mileage to their daily commute to go from one neighborhood school to another.
We certainly can share that report with the board. And so as we've talked about next steps, I'll turn the presentation over to Glenn.
Thanks. So, next up, what we're looking at going next with this is forming a working group for stakeholder engagement, something in the realm of fifteen to twenty people, bringing on a third-party facilitator similar to like we did with New Vista, somebody not, you know, from outside of the organization that can give, that can help mediate those talks with the stakeholders. That would have district representation along with principal and regional parent, and DAC and DPC representation, along with the equity committees and employee associations, and even student representation as well. And that working group would be formed here in the near future, and we think that about a one-year timeline is probably appropriate to put that together, hold regular meetings, dig into these issues deeply, give periodic board reports, and a final report probably about this time next year.
With the caveat that we don't know what that report would look like. I don't think you solve this problem within a year. I do think that you can make some significant progress in kind of trying to figure things out. But the interconnectedness of all of these issues, along with the calendars within which they sit, you know, we think open enrollment calendar, we think, you know, we don't want folks going into open enrollment next year, we're thinking that there's going to be significant change. So, you know, within a year, we feel like this would be the right next step. I think what we'd ask of the board is to kind of consider this and give us the thumbs up to move ahead with this process, or if there's any suggestions on how to improve that or tweak that, maybe we can flush this out now or within the next week or so, so we can get moving. But again, you know, the role of this committee is not to make the decision for the board, it is to really dig into the issues, certainly with board guidance around the parameters of what that would look like. Then in a year from now, having a similar conversation, these are the challenges, these are the problems you asked us to look at, these are the things that we've considered. And based on what we've discovered, what's happened in other districts throughout Colorado and across the country, based on what our facilitators' expertise has probably helped to lend to the conversation, these are things for consideration that then would put us in this point next year to begin to really start to action plan, to start to make some things and changes happen to respond to our enrollment outlook.
You have the thumbs up for me, but my question is about neighborhood school boundaries. I'm assuming that would be part of this discussion. As long as I've been involved in BVSD, the boundaries haven't changed, so that's been, I don't know, fifteen years. And I'm wondering, I've always wondered, because before we had this decline in enrollment, there were schools in the same region that one was overcrowded and one was well below capacity. And I always wondered why we didn't, you know, kind of shift things around.
Yeah, I think that's one of the reasons of having this group formed, is to kind of dissect all of those, because, you know, there's always implications on the system whenever you do a change to one, and boundaries are a perfect example of that. It could look, make a lot of sense to do that for one school from perspective of looking at one school, but when we look at the system, the impacts on surrounding schools, if it's really going to alleviate problems, open enrollment weighs into that, because you can change boundaries, but people still go where they want to go. So I think that's the big reason for forming a committee like this.
I have two questions that are kind of unrelated. One, you shared optimal conditions for elementary schools, knowing that our middle-level schools, our middle schools are experiencing some declining enrollment in big ways. Do we have information on what optimal conditions look like in those settings, so we're not pulling back on elective courses and different programmatic offerings at that site level? So that's my first question.
That's a great question. And yes, you are absolutely right that at the middle level, there are also programmatic implications. And for example, electives are a big one. That as student enrollment decreases, the number of teachers decrease, and the ability to offer a wide array of electives for students also decreases. And so the comprehensive course selection access that students have at larger schools, where there are a greater number of choices, is obviously a different experience than at schools that have a fewer number of choices. Athletics and activities are another example. That we see in middle schools that are larger, they can field, if you will, a greater number of athletics teams, a greater, larger selection of activities, that we imagine that students in smaller schools would probably like to have the opportunity to participate in, but there just isn't the critical mass of students to be able to do that. So those are very existent examples of what some of our students are experiencing in our middle schools currently as a result.
And then my other question has to do with this timeline and the processes and the policies that we currently have and will need to have as a result of this. And if some of that can occur in tandem, I'm thinking we don't have a process for redrawing our policy around district boundaries, or we keep talking about updating our open enrollment policy. So some of those policies, can we work on those in tandem, or is expectation that all of those will begin to shift or be created at the end of this process?
Hard to say, right? Like certainly, policies are a big part of what could shape what we do. For example, the board could create a policy that says when a school hits a certain threshold, whatever that might be, right, then this is what happens, right? And so it's not like when, you know, we engage in a process and do something along those lines. So it's hard to say. I know that they're part of the solution, and when you change those, like if you were to change open enrollment policy, if you were to develop a new policy around school closures or drawing attendance boundaries, it would then potentially impact the other solutions that you might want to consider. And so I think that as the committee meets and works together, we'll have a better sense of how they want to look at open enrollment policy, attendance boundaries, you know, thresholds for community discussion, you know, how do we, you know, look at additional programming if we think that's an opportunity to bring kids in and level out some enrollments and things? So it's just kind of hard to say right now, Nicole. I don't know that we'll know that until we kind of get a facilitator on board, lay out the work, and know and understand. It might be we could review the policies and list concerns with the policies, but bringing a red-line version for study and approval before this committee reconvenes with the board, I just don't know that we're going to be able to do that.
It seems like we have de facto policies, because when the elementary school hits a certain threshold, we don't offer the same electives that we do to a bigger one. So I think it's a good conversation to be having, so that there's some clarity around that, I think. And I know it's hard, because you can't have, like, at 251, you get this, but at 250, you fall off a cliff. So I understand that, but I also think that people understand that somewhere in that range, things start happening to a school. So I think having some clarity around that would be really helpful for the community.
It's difficult, right? Like, we, you know, I know that Bill will say this later on, as he does, as presents his beautiful preliminary budget that we've worked hard to prepare. Ninety percent of the dollars that we spend in this district are on people, right? And we've been having this conversation, as we've been having lunch with all of the elementary school teachers, right? Because when we get to these situations where they're one-round, two-round teetering, right, and they share with us, "Well, just give us another teacher, and the problem is solved." But for every person I add, it impacts the ability to pay all, right? You could, we've committed to a salary schedule for our employees, and I know we're in negotiations now for many of our employees in regards to getting compensation where we want it to be. But how much you pay people impacts how many people you can have. If you have a set budget that doesn't, that has prospects of reducing and shrinking over the course of the next five years, right? If our enrollment is declining, we will have less money, right? Right now, we have, we, you know, as we think about all of the commitments that we've made around compensation, they're tied to the funding formulas and the people that we distribute out to schools. And they're also tied to, if you have, don't have enough kids, right, to support the number of teachers that you have, you have to reduce the number of teachers. So if we get into the place where that no longer holds true, then it's hard for us to keep our commitments around compensation. And so, to your point, Kathy, right, like, we do have practices that begin to really start to make schools more challenged based on our budget practices. That's not necessarily a policy. Some is within our negotiated agreement with BVEA in regards to teachers, and I think our commitments to BVPA as well, I'm not certain on that. But this is, we have to live within our means. We have a responsibility to our district to be fiscally responsible. And those choices, you know, some of those choices we've made and we've come to agreement on in regards to compensation. So, but as we think about the solution, again, just buying more people, like, we don't have the funds to sustain that at this point. Something would change them. I mean, you know, if they, some windfall or taper gets overturned, I don't know. But at this point, that's not how it works.
But my point more, Rob, was that the more clarity we can provide around what our practice is, I think the better off we'll be in having the community understand what we're doing, because I think it gives a way to feeling inequities where they might not exist. It's like, well, you got this, and my school looks like this, so why is that happening? That's all I'm suggesting, is that we have some more clarity around that. So, on the working group, what I would like to see, Rob, is I'd like to see the charge, because I think that's going to be really important for us to understand and for the community to understand exactly what it is that we're asking them to do. And I know you don't have it yet, but I think the sooner we can understand exactly what it is we're asking this group to do, I think the better, because I think there is a lot of room for some misinterpretation as well. Like, are they going to come, like you said, they're not giving us, are they going to give us recommendations? Or how different is it going to be than what Glenn already carries in his head, which is, he knows all of this stuff, and he's just going to share it with a whole bunch of people, right? Which is good, I mean, we need that. But I'm just trying to figure out where it is between this slide presentation, which is really helpful, and where we're going, how we're going to get to where we're going to get. So when you figure, when you all figure out kind of what that looks like, I think it would be great to share it with the board.
I believe based on the timeline and based on my conversations with Rob, the idea would be that that would come to the board for study and action before convening the group, right? It wouldn't be the group decides the charge, the Board of Education is going to study and approve what that charge would be to allow us to move forward. I feel like that's the right, because to your point, Kathy, it is the responsibility of the board to clearly define what are the things that this working group needs to consider, and really clearly define that scope. So you don't, you know, they're not working for a year, they come back and go out of scope and ask you for things, because then that's just going to put us behind in solving the problem.
And I see it sometime in May, we'll get the committee charged, so we'll look forward to seeing that. And then what's missing to me also is our other elected bodies. So how are we going to, like, keep the city of Boulder and the city of Lafayette and others informed on this, because they're not represented on the, in the working group? And I know you don't want a working group of fifty, but so how are we going to partner with them to?
We were talking about this- We were talking about this today, on how do we make sure that as we think about this working group, that, that we include those municipalities in a way that creates inclusion? I think in talking with some of the members who were here the last time this, some of the staff who was here the last time this went around, it can also be challenging for those people representing municipalities, whether it's a council member or, because they don't, they speak as an individual, they don't speak for their board or their entire city. So we want to make sure that they're included and involved. I don't know that we have a clean way right now to do that. I think we need to have more conversations, but it's something we discussed even today in preparing the presentation, because we knew it was an important piece the last time in early 2000s when we started to tackle this, so.
Well, I guess on that note, are we anticipating the committee meetings would be either live viewable or recorded and watchable online for folks who want to keep abreast of the process?
I don't know that we've gotten to that point to make that decision yet. I think that that's something I'd want to talk to whoever our facilitator is, to see what best practices are around that, and then certainly create transparency, but whether they're livestreamed or not, I mean, I'm guessing they would be public meetings. So before I commit to an answer on that, let me.
Sure, and I mean, I can understand the different competing concerns, it just seems like that might be a way to offer inclusion to our various municipalities and city groups without having to have them speak for themselves.
And then related to that, I think there needs to be some process for them to provide questions to the committee. Some formal process, maybe? Because we are kind of an integral part of the whole fabric, and so I would think as smart as the people around this table are, there's probably things we wouldn't think about that they might want to ask us to consider, so.
You can just have people texting each other.
Yeah, we don't want to be, but we'll just, can you just pass out your number, Glenn? We'll just text you and hand it out to the city, so.
So again, I think that next steps, we form the charge, study action, we begin to work on an RFP for a facilitator, we start to call around to our colleagues around the state and country that we know that have tackled this work and have done it well, to get some thoughts, ideas, lessons learned, share those with the board as, as that information comes in, put a, put a really solid RFP on the, you know, out to bid to get somebody to help really guide us, to then share with us the pros and cons of all of the things that we're kind of bringing up. And I think that, that we'll be on, on the right path.
And I see a critical role for Mr. Barber in this, because like you said, I mean, when you're sitting in a school, you think, well, why can't we just add a teacher? So I think to the extent we can communicate, communicate, communicate what that looks like, and why what may seem like an easy solution for one school impacts the whole district, to the extent we can get data like that out there, I think that's going to be really helpful along the way. Because as we've seen from our neighboring districts, even the best thought-out processes are causing a lot of turmoil. And no matter how good this gets, we're going to have turmoil. I mean, I just don't see it any other way. And I just think we need to gird ourselves for that.
Well, I think that-
I won't quote Carol Hedges, but I think we know what we, we need to do.
Being thoughtful, knowing that we have to, we can't do this alone, we're going to, it's going to, we're going to count on our communities to engage, count on our committees to help guide us and direct us, you know, bring in some expertise to help us kind of shape where we're at. And then, you know, and then moving forward cautiously, right, Kathy? I mean, to your point, we've seen this go sideways in a lot of places, even with a plan and even with commitments that, you know, at the end of the day, real tough choices weren't able to be made because of one reason or another. So, you know, my hope is that we can learn from what happened well in those, in those instances, and what didn't, and then try to avoid, avoid that, and just try to keep our community together through what, again, is an incredibly complicated situation and conversation to have.
But we also need to make sure we communicate that this is not something we sidestep. This will have an impact, the question is how. It's not something that we can just ignore, and I think people might not appreciate that yet.
Yeah, I was going to say that we might want to communicate that status quo is not an option, you know? Because we hear that a lot, why can't you just give us two rounds? We've always had two rounds, status quo. And it doesn't sound like that is one of our options.
Not if we don't want to go bankrupt.
Our neighboring district did that a long time ago, and it wasn't pleasant. Almost bankrupt. Board members, anything? I have, I have a request before I get to Richard. Is there any way we can turn down the air conditioning? We're like freezing.
Turn it down, you're not cold enough?
I mean, so it's, turn it up a little, I mean, I did, I can go to the car and get my coat, but I didn't think-
Yeah, it's your choice, Dr. Peter. All of the female staff members are going to get coats, and we got to warm up.
Except maybe Kitty. Kitty's probably in heaven.
I'm working on it.
All right, thanks, Laura. Richard?
I, I just need to get some clarification here, because at the last board meeting, we were talking about a facilities committee group of some sort in terms of bringing back some information. Is this the same group we're talking about?
Two different groups.
Okay, great.
Two different groups.
Right. Yeah, because I was a little bit confused in terms of that, so.
And they're on different timelines, Richard. That's the other important thing to know.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
But there certainly is a relationship between the two, of course.
Absolutely, there's a big relationship on that, yeah.
I'm just thinking about hearing from teachers and hearing from parents. How are we going to support and our schools that are in these tough positions right now through this process? Because it's going to take a while. So how are we thinking about that as we keep bumping up to higher thresholds and people are feeling a bit overwhelmed and looking at alternative options, whether it be for staffing or for their students, through this? I think that's another part we need to think about, is how are we, how are we handling those of us that are currently with us?
In our next presentation, preliminary budget, we do have some dollars built in around staffing, especially as, as, and board members, as we've witnessed, when, when staffing gets really close to that threshold and the needs of the students, combined with the class size, becomes super overwhelming for teachers, we do have a proposed budget item to, to begin to try to smooth that out across the district. So, so we have considered that. Bill's going to leave again and then come back in 10 minutes and build the anticipation.
So I think, can we take a quick break? I'm going to go get my coat.
Meet it.
And then we'll start again with the budget presentation?
Sounds good.
Okay. We're now into the second part of our presentation. Dr. Anderson, do you want to introduce the next part?
I sure do. Board members, our award-winning CFO, Bill Sutter is here to present to you all our 22-23 preliminary budget. We've been working on this budget to present to you over the course of the past several months, have sought input from stakeholders as we've considered what we would want to present to you today. Again, this is preliminary with the final budget being presented in-
May.
-May for approval. And so without further ado, I will turn the presentation over to Bill to walk you through where we are and then share some highlights.
Thanks, Rob. Certainly, if there are any questions, we can stop along the way, is no problem at all. So we'll jump through essentially five different sections, the timeline and milestones, we've looked at many times, input, enrollment, preliminary budget, and then next steps.
Bill, hang tight, because it's not being presented.
Boo. Start, I can-
You have, are you booing yourself, or?
No, it's, it's, yeah, it's in there. Let me redo it. Can't share your screen, sorry, an error has occurred. Sure you can.
It's too cold, the computer's-
Yeah, right?
A tad.
Oh, it's a, it's a window, though. Let's see if that works.
There we go.
Am I better?
Yep, you're awesome.
All right. So, as I was saying, five sections we'll jump through real quick. Timeline and milestones, we've gone through this multiple times, I think starting back in September, but this is just a big red highlight there to show about where we are in the process, and then the few steps that are left. However, they are fairly large steps in the process. The legislature still has work to do over the next few weeks. We're finalizing negotiations, we'll bring the proposed budget at the end of May, and then budget adoption in June. So for the input side of this, so really, the focus of budget development has been on employee recognition and compensation, strategic initiatives, investments, addressing achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, and disproportionality, as well as the omnipresent inflation that is top of mind to a lot of people. So when it comes to meeting with various stakeholders around the district, this is a long list of folks that we've met with, from DAC presenting their recommendations back in January, the school accountability committees feeding that information up through DAC, the Latino Parent Advisory Council, the Parents of Color Council, Special Education Advisory Committee, District Parent Council, obviously, all the public comments that happen at school board meetings, the superintendent's school visits that have occurred, the principal advisory committee, and superintendent's cabinet. And then also 16 topics at 11 school board meetings at work sessions over the past seven or eight months. So just real quickly, most of these are focused on strategic plan updates and also the budget development process, various concepts of community schools and strategic partnerships, all the parts of the strategic plan. Yes?
Quick question. So when you say you got input from like the Latino Parent Advisory Council, is there some way you can track that, or what does that look like when you get the input from these different kinds of groups?
So the conversation, so I had a presentation with the various groups that I met with, and it was basically a state of the union, so to speak, for the district's budget and the outlook, based on the governor's budget, based on the December revenue forecast, and then framing the response in, in the context of the strategic plan, is the district on track? And if it's not on track, what are your suggestions to get it back on track? Or basically, what changes to the strategic plan would need to be made? And generally, the feedback was, you know, there's obviously a few minor things like, you know, we think more of this or less of that, but that really wasn't the overarching conversation. It was more, generally speaking, the strategic plan is on track, and there weren't any kind of major suggestions on changing it.
So my question is, how do we close that feedback loop? How does the board know if there were concerns raised at some of these, since we don't go to some of these meetings? Is there some way to get that feedback to us, or is it assumed that they were just minor changes?
My assumption would be that what you'll find in this budget is certainly aligned to the feedback, the ongoing feedback, and then the individual sessions. And then, you know, we present a preliminary budget, right, that's, that's, that's open to the public, so they can see and know and understand what we're investing, and then there's engagement opportunities between now and the final budget for us to be able to hear if, if we're off track or if we've missed the mark. I don't know that there's a way where we would be able to track each individual thought on the budget, because when, when Bill does these presentations, right, there may be one or two folks, but, you know, the, none of these, these committees are taking like an action on approving, you know, what's happening or not, it's just more individual comments. So my assumption would be, we've listened, we've heard, you know, again, the, the big pillars of our, of our budget are the ones that Bill had described, and then as we move forward, there's still going to be opportunities, still board meetings, still public comment and input opportunities for folks to share if we've missed the mark.
And mostly, Matt, Rob, big rocks, not little rocks. If there were big concerns, that there'd be a way for us to know. Lisa?
Well, to your point, I mean, Capel did speak at great length about wanting to have budgetary elements that were more focused on bilingual education, obviously, and we have a work session on that next week, but I'm not sure so much for some of these, some of them are closed meetings, some of them, as Kathy mentioned, we just don't have district reps to attend. Were there other sort of large takeaway things like that from these meetings? And perhaps today isn't the right time for it, but generally speaking, understanding, you know, sort of what the takeaways were from these budget prioritization meetings and what these groups are asking for us to have as, as a top priority or as a major consideration when we're looking at the budget feels like it would be useful.
So I specifically asked for feedback from whoever the chair of the committee was, and I haven't, generally speaking. They're not as specific of, you know, you should change this or do this. It's more, yes, the strategic plan is on track, in the, the meeting, the conversation. I mean, it's not a, they didn't take a vote, they didn't say you need to add these 10 things and take out these five or whatever. It's really a very generic feedback. Now, if an individual committee has provided the board specific feedback, that's around in a separate process, and certainly-
Having been on one of those committees for about 10 years and having Bill come speak to us every single year, it's more of a general, this is what the budget looks like, and people ask questions if there's something in particular that they don't know where it is, or what does this mean? In the 10 years that I was involved in that, there was never a huge ask. It was really more general, like Bill says, and just some clarification, like where are teacher raises, or where are extracurricular activities, or things like that.
So this budget development input, I think is kind of like a misnomer. Are we really getting input, or we're not getting input? You know, when we call it budget development input, that means to me, if I go to a, a meeting and I'm hearing some, is there opportunities for me to ask the presenter in terms of, okay, so if we have X number of dollars left over, how can we expand them, and, you know, that kind of stuff? I mean, how specific do we get?
So the question that I asked the, the groups that I met with was, again, in that context of the strategic plan, is the strategic plan on track? And if not, what adjustments would be made? Because the strategic plan priorities are budget priorities, or one in the same, or should be. And so, again, that general feedback of the strategic plan is on track. Now, there were some comments of, it would be great to get a more detailed presentation of the strategic plan. Sometimes the board meeting conversations are a little higher level, so that's, you know, more, more of a strategic plan communication issue than, than the budget feedback kind of piece.
But, but over the course of the year, they are hearing updates on the strategic plan, in terms of some of these particular stakeholder groups. Because I know that the Capel, for example, they hear updates as it relates to the strategic plan, and that's when they get the input, not so much into the budget, but in terms of, are we on target, are we not on target, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we're very intentional as we think about all of the committees, whether they're board advisory, superintendent advisory, community groups, to really articulate the work we're doing, why we're doing it. Oftentimes, I can speak specifically to DAC and DPC, where I am the representative, they get to hear a version of what's presented to the board, right, to keep them in the loop. And so to your point, Richard, I believe that, that these groups are engaged in the work that we're doing. We have highlighted the work that many of these groups, by the way, have influenced, right, over time. And so as I think, as, as Bill proceeds and starts to present the budget and the items that are in the budget, I think that what you'll see, especially as we think about what we heard at our school visits, what you've heard from the groups that, that you're connected with, that we have taken those things into consideration.
In the past, being a DAC member, we would send a DAC representative to like a budget advisory committee or some sort of, is that still a process that exists, or does that committee do our different parent engagement- Or does that committee, do our different parent engaging groups, still have somebody that they can send to that committee? Or does that committee exist anymore?
So we haven't met yet this year. The plan is to meet in May. Since we're rapidly approaching May, but, yes.
Is that the superintendent's budget, I mean, what committee's meeting in May?
Yeah, yeah. The Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee.
And is that the one you'd send?
Yeah. Enrollment. So as we dove in depth to enrollment in the last presentation, projecting for next year, a decline of two hundred and nine students. One thing I want to point out, charter schools, obviously, they're fully open enrolled. So usually, there's a, a filling up to capacity of charter schools through the open enrollment process. And with preschool, our practice is to carry forward the prior year's count number. It's really a difficult projection to make to say, you know, how many preschool students are coming in. So we just carry, carry that number forward and then make adjustments as we get through the enrollment, the fall enrollment period, and make adjustments to that in the revised budget.
So Bill, for the preschool, is that just four-year-olds or those are CPP slots? Or what, and some three-year-olds? Or what are the, what's in that number?
Yes, three and four, the CPP, special ed, and tuition students as well.
Okay.
So focus mainly on the general operating fund, revenues, transfers, expenditures, the one-time resources and uses, and then a summary of changes, the other funds, some of the big changes within other funds, and then next steps. So on the revenue side, this net per pupil revenue change, sixteen and a half million dollars. This is a thirteen, thirteen, three point five percent inflation with a negative factor reduction. That is a combination of resources that were provided to districts in the current year as well as what is being talked about and projected for the next School Finance Act, which we don't have a version of yet. But this is at least a very good estimate of where we are. Our twenty-five percent override, so that is indexed to total program. So as inflation goes up, it does, it has the potential to go down if enrollment were to decline significantly. But with that inflation rate, that is growing a little bit. Categorical funding, so this is all other categorical funding. We have the line item in here for the special education categorical funding that's been proposed at eighty million dollars statewide. That'll come in at about three million. It's important to note that that is a reimbursement for current expenditures. That is not a mandate to spend additional dollars on special education as we certainly meet all our requirements under federal special education law and IEPs and whatnot. Little reduction in specific ownership tax and then some other miscellaneous revenue changes for a small dollar amount. So about twenty-one million dollars.
So Bill, on the sped, what you're saying is that we're just using that to reduce our general fund contribution to special education, but we have to spend those dollars on sped that come in through the categorical for sped. But then reduces, it's coming in as a categorical on sped and then we can spend a little bit less, three million less, out of the general fund to support those sped services.
Correct. It's an offset.
Yep.
For transfers, so charter schools, obviously, their per pupil revenue goes up with the increase in inflation. For capital reserve, we've included a increase for continuing the bus replacement cycle. Food service, so this one point four million dollars is pretty exclusively inflation costs for food and supplies. And then preschool fund, I have it in there, is zero. It's because there's a net zero change. But the per pupil revenue is going up. Therefore, we can reduce slightly our general fund contribution.
Nicole? I was just wondering for the food service, is that, assuming that the, we're not going to have any additional flexibility from the federal government around free, or providing universal free lunches? Or is that, what, how does that come into play with that legislation that's pending?
Yes. And the other funds are at the end of the list. And so if I can come back to that at the end with the food service fund, but I'll get to that.
And we know that we're going to have a huge unfunded mandate when we start implementing preschool. We aren't taking that into account yet because that doesn't get stood up in this next school year.
Correct. Compensation, so we have included a three point five percent cost of living adjustment for all employees. This is consistent with our practice of providing a cost of living adjustment at the Tabor defined inflation rate, which is the average inflation increase from one year to the next. Steps, lanes, and attrition, that's movement on negotiated salary schedules for all employees. Health and dental, almost a million dollars for the premium increase on the district contribution side. PERA, the employer rate is increasing by half a percent. So from twenty point four to twenty point nine percent. It's one point three million dollars. And then other compensation items, we have a placeholder in here for adjustments related to our practice of the seventy-fifth percentile adjustments. It's important to note that with para and health and dental, those two items, as they go up, they reduce resources available for either employee compensation or other programs and services. So these are costs that we deal with, but they are part of the total compensation package for employees. So sixteen point two million dollars for employees. Ongoing budget adjustments, so we have our staffing formula changes. So about a million dollars for classroom teachers and paraeducators. So this is just with that reducing enrollment, a little adjustment there. And these are, the staffing formulas are different at each level. So as high schools are changing differently than elementary schools, those sort of net out. Additional student supports, so this is some ILC paraeducator time, some nursing time, and mental health supports for half a million. Equity department, a little restructuring there with some FET team expansion and a TOSA. One of the comments was, we need another AMI in the budget feedback. So that was some pretty specific feedback. Our STEM education has not got to cloning yet. So unfortunately, we'll have to just add a TOSA. Cora request support, so this is a position to support the astronomical rise in the open records requests that we have to deal with and just having a person to help coordinate that.
So can we get some detail to that, just a little bit?
The Cora request?
Just what it, you know, what the increase has been and kind of the kinds of things, not right now. I mean, sometime downstream.
I can give you specific, I can give you specific. You, you have a small number of folks constantly submitting Cora requests, right? There are laws that require us to be very expedient when we respond to Cora requests. And, you know, it was a point in time in this district where it was, it was folded into a position. And legally, we don't feel like we can with the number and the quantity and the frequency of the, of the Cora requests that we're receiving. And listen, we have nothing to hide. It's not that. It's just these things take a lot of time. Folks ask for very specific things. We try to accommodate, but we just don't have the bandwidth to be able to.
I'm not counting that. I'm just curious as to kind of the times that we live in. If you could just give us a sense of what that, what that looks like, that's all.
So this means money is being taken out of the classroom to pay for us responding to the Cora request that we have been. I mean, everyone needs to understand that. That is really disturbing.
And a hundred thousand dollars. And I just want to ask, is there, I know we, we charge a very small fee for folks that file Coras. Can we have a sliding scale fee where, you know, your first one is fifteen dollars and it gradually goes up?
There's, there's no fee to file a Cora request. We have to do the work and then.
We say this will take X number of hours.
This will take this, and if you want us to continue and then.
It's like first hour free.
And then folks adjust it. And then they adjust it again. I mean, this is kind of the world that, that school districts are living in.
Kathleen is twitching over there.
No, I was just going to answer that specific question. The fees are set by state law and we cannot exceed them. So pretty frequently, if the Cora request is, for example, every board email on litigation, we have to go through all of the emails. We can only charge a twenty-five, twenty-eight dollar hourly rate. And my assistant or I can average a hundred and twenty-five emails an hour. So when we get back these Cora requests that have three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five responses, we're just talking about absolutely dozens of hours. And as Dr. Anderson said, that's when we get to the results. There's a lot of work that goes into trying to identify what that responsive body of documents is. And the other piece that we have that relates are records requests. When we have attorneys that are representing families, they ask for student records, including emails. And right now, I know that we have eleven in my office, eleven requests. In one case, looking back one year at email because of the frequency of parent communication, we had like eight thousand emails that covered a really short period of time. So it's a combination. It all comes from litigation or Cora or other requests. That with a digital world, we've got just a lot more documents. And with the litigious world, we've got a lot more lawyers coming around asking for records.
And some of it's done open enrollment. I mean, Mike Wilcox gets scads of requests. What are the percent of students who get accepted to this school? Or these handful of schools over the past three years? And like that kind of stuff is, because, you know, you can figure out which school you can get into. Anyway, moving right along. It's, the position is essentially a paralegal. It's not quite a hundred thousand dollars, around it, but it's essentially in that ballpark. Grad plus implementation, so work-based learning, I think this is the coordinator, and some CTE assistant principal, and then an online math accelerator for a one point oh online teacher. So net adjustments there, two hundred thousand with the reduction in the classroom staffing.
Can you?
Oui.
What is an online math accelerator?
So I don't know if that's the official title. I think the idea is that we know that we need to build some bandwidth around creating acceleration opportunities for students in mathematics, fifth to sixth grade, and also in middle school. And so we want to invest in a fully online teacher that can serve schools that haven't had enough students to be able to stand up their own acceleration opportunities as a first step in, in moving towards to creating equal opportunities to accelerate mathematics as aligned with our strategic plan and our strategic plan metrics.
Substitute teacher support, so three hundred thousand dollars. This is a six dollar and fifteen cents per day increase that after applying the cost of living adjustment, we'll get our rate up to a hundred and fifteen dollars. In the revised budget, in this current year, we included a five dollar increase. So it's currently a hundred and five. And this will bring it up another ten dollars to a hundred and fifteen for next year. Health services, so this transition from Medicaid funding. So we have been living off Medicaid carryover for quite some time. And so this is kind of a restructuring and transitioning one of the health services staff over to the general fund. Operational costs, so utilities, it's about five hundred thousand of that seven hundred thousand for utilities inflation. And then the other, it's about a hundred and seventy-five for maintenance materials inflation. Software, contracted inflationary increases there. And then eight FTE to support vacancies with floater positions in custodial and food services. It's one of the places where just not having enough staff, either from a vacancy, a true unfilled position, or somebody out sick or something like that. So there was a committee made up of BVCEA and district staff and came up with this idea to help support those folks in custodial and food services. Oops. And then this is the last line there is a revenue reduction offset. So we cut a little revenue and cut a little expense that was kind of just an in and out. So overall, one point five million net additional ongoing budget adjustments. So quick summary, twenty point eight million in new ongoing resources and twenty-one million in ongoing total uses. So an ending balance that's a little bit upside down. This is not concerning, it's two hundred thousand on this twenty-one million, but it's two hundred thousand on some three hundred million of the total general fund. So this is a great place to be at this point in the process. So next, we'll move into our one-time expenditures. So we have been using a staffing reserve for a number of years now. This really is to address those enrollment inefficiencies. We make projections. Glenn does a phenomenal job of making those projections by school. And then Robin and all the instructional folks have to take those and make those staffing allocations. And then students do or don't show up in the appropriate numbers. And so the staffing reserve is really there to address those inefficiencies where we get up against or a little over the contracted numbers in the teacher contract or just a class size gets a little too big. This next staffing reserve for K five targeted support, I don't know if you want to speak to this a little bit, Rob?
I do. Board members, this is what we heard time and time again as we went out to our school visits where, you know, the, when you get very close to the maximum class size per our contract and the intensity of student needs is compounded on that class size amount, that we found that, that multiple schools and multiple grades, that, that teachers were really feeling the stressors of that. And so what we'd want to do is, we're still kind of recovering and, you know, working through the impacts of, of the pandemic to designate two million dollars in one-time funds to be able to go in and have those resources available when we, when we review schools, when we review their class size and review the needs of the kids in those larger class sizes to allow us to even those things out in a way to, to support kids and support students.
This next one, FOSS kit replacement, they're just old and falling apart. And so this is the STEM kits that are at the elementary level, science-related.
Rob, can you like, so what happened is, I understand is during the pandemic, we didn't renew the contract. So we have bits and pieces. So they'll do like a, we're going to do a science thing and you've got a piece of string and a random light bulb and you're supposed to put it together to come up with a science experiment. Am I exaggerating? But not, but not a whole lot.
It makes for, it makes for a good point.
And two paper clips as well, so.
You know, I think that what happened is, as, as the old FOSS kits that we had were not aligned to the new standards in this interim year, you know, our team, I think, worked really hard to try to create materials and push them out in a FOSS kit-like manner. And we feel like moving forward that will, that now that FOSS kits have been more aligned to the, to the new standards, that it's time to go ahead and purchase those and push those back out to schools.
Next, we have a line item here for temporary subteacher rates. So this is a practice that we did this spring for, we'll call it surge pricing, where we had addressed the daily rate for subteachers at a fairly significant cost. But it really made it so that we didn't struggle to get subteachers.
Yeah, again, board members, and I'm sure as some of. Yeah, again, board members, and I'm sure as some of you looked at the ongoing expenditures versus one time and we announced that we were at a whopping $115. That probably didn't feel great given the feedback we've had and we know, we know that we're still there. You know, the strategy here is to use one-time dollars to continue to try to increase those rates so we can continue to have subs in classrooms and then inch up the ongoing rate over time so we can, you know, balance both resources. And so the idea of surge pricing is something that we really, I think, piloted and found very successful this year. You know, on Fridays paying more than on other days potentially, and then certainly after the fires, we raised all of our rates to a place where we're getting very high substitute coverage for our classrooms. If you'll remember in the fall, this was the biggest issue that we would hear and here in April, we're at 90% coverage is even on Fridays. And so we feel like setting those dollars aside or allow us to, to add to the flat rate as we go through depending upon anticipated vacancies in kind of the environment is a smart strategic decision and use of resources.
Then the last line we have here is literacy intervention, virtual online, three teacher FTE for this virtual intervention pilot.
Sure, this is an idea directly from one of our school visits. I believe Kitty was there. And yes, you know, so BU Link, which is a program that we had invested in over the past two years is going away as the pandemic subsides, hopefully. And, you know, one of the challenges with taking teacher literacy innovation to, or intervention to scale is you can only do a half or a whole position, right, at an individual school. The idea that was pitched to us by teachers at BU Link was that if we were able to keep them in a virtual interventionist system, that they could take handfuls of kids from lots of schools, engage them virtually through the tools that they learned and really perfected over the course of the pandemic. And so as teachers are doing independent practice or pulling small groups, one or two kids from a classroom could participate in virtual intervention. And then that would be just an innovative way to get kids what they need, to engage them in ways where they wouldn't be able to engage in independent practice and an opportunity for us to really rethink intervention, I think, in a really innovative way. Want to thank our teachers at BU Link who shared that idea with us and just, we would have never heard of this idea had we not been engaging teachers in the ways that we had this year. So I'm very excited to move forward with this idea.
Rob, when we implement something that has come from a suggestion from teachers or a number of teachers, do we let them know?
Well, they're going to get hired, so yeah.
Yeah. No, do we say, we loved your idea and we're putting it in the budget?
We'll follow up. I know exactly who to speak with and I can check in with Eric Moroyn. But yeah, that's a great, yeah, it's important for folks to know and understand that we listen. And this is a really, I think, a wonderful idea that could have lasting positive implications on our school system.
I just want to underscore that I really appreciate this and like this idea. I feel like the pandemic did provide opportunity for us to get creative. I love that this idea came from the teachers. Just to make sure I'm reading this correctly, is this correct to assume that the three literacy interventionists are sort of in the same group as the one math, what do we call it? Math accelerator, online accelerator? Sort of the same idea, right? So we're essentially dedicating one FTE for math at a distance learning, if you will, and then three FTE at a distance learning for literacy. Is that true?
Yep, yeah. So again, you know, as a first step. And then we'll look to look for proof of concept. We'll be able to really dial in on academic return on investment. These teachers will have small caseloads, will be able to know and understand the growth of the kids on those caseloads and be able to really be able to come back to this board in a year from now and say, this is the idea, these are the results. We think that either we need another year to think about this, this is what we learned, or this is something that worth, you know, more investment.
I look forward to hearing about the return on investment piece of this and be curious to hear what data points we're using.
I just wanted to mention if there are folks listening that after getting this pitch by you, BU, I think you had the opportunity to re-pitch it back to 10 to 12 elementary schools that we visited and that the response was overwhelmingly enthusiastic, right? So if folks are listening and thinking that this might be a program that their children would attend, this is something that already seemed to have just phenomenal support across our teaching staff as an excellent idea and a great intervention.
Moving right along. Three items here are three-year funding of these line items. So CTE program startup, this is teacher FTE at high schools to ramp up the CTE programs there. Grad plus coordinators at each of the large comprehensive high schools, so half an FTE at each of them there. And then a coordinator for post-secondary success for three years. So again, a one-time investment, but over the course of three years.
Very excited about all three of these proposed budget items. You know, as you try to grow any program, you need seed funding, right? So to be able to provide early in our CTE team funds, to be able to provide additional FTE to schools, to start to really begin to seed these career and technical programs that we know and understand kids are interested in and maybe the FTE is preventing that from happening. To be able to begin to really put FTE in each one of our schools, to really begin to think about how do we align CTE, concurrent enrollment, bilingual education, and these work-based experiences. And then a coordinator at the district level. These are three-year investments with the idea that, you know, as you try to invest and change systems, over time, the courses that kids that will choose will transition over to these programs, which would then theoretically free up the seats in other classes to potentially compress other electives in schools. And so we chose to do this not as an ongoing, in an ongoing way, but to take the three-year investment, pay for it now, so it's not a year-over-year, one-time investment as in a way to invest in our grad plus initiative and strategic plan.
So, Rob, sometime downstream, I'd like to understand more about the grad plus coordinators because I get nervous adding in administrator positions when we're in a declining enrollment situation and we're facing all of the stresses we are. So I just would love to learn a little bit more about that downstream.
Sure. And we view that more as a counseling support versus an administrative support with the coordinators that will be working with students, but we can certainly get more details on that.
Actually, I wanted to thank you for that line item because I remember mentioning that it seemed like a really heavy lift for our counselors in the high schools. So I think that in order to do the grad plus right, I think that's really important.
Do you want to speak to the next one to the bilingual support Harvard residency?
So this, I don't want to get ahead of our presentation to the board for next week, but.
A teaser.
Yeah, you know, this is, consider this, you know, just a little foreshadowing. And we feel like we're just going to need some district bandwidth, temporary bandwidth to really evaluate and support our bilingual programs as we try to really meet the goals of our strategic plan and graduation plus. And so this investment would be for a one-year Harvard resident. Our goal would be to establish a partnership with Harvard University and their doctoral program in education leadership. We have somebody identified we think is going to be a great fit for this position.
And the last line on there, some teacher training this summer for the Orton Hill-Gillingham program, so expanding the number of teachers that are trained up in, and Rob?
Again, Bill. Board members, again, this is something that we heard very clearly as we went out to schools and we had teachers say, man, we would love to get Orton Gillingham trained, but every time we go to sign up for the training, all the slots are taken. And so we decided that any, you know, $300,000 will get us a ton of slots. My hope is that we don't turn any teacher away who wants to get Orton Gillingham trained. We think it's good for kids. We think that it's, it'll help improve their craft and support our students. And so, again, evidence of just the power of being out in schools and listening and putting those investments in our budget to make us better.
And this is early summer, so it'll be in place by the start of the school year. And the last page, so the miscellaneous program supports, this was quite a long list. It's relatively small dollar amounts, but some training, program reviews, a little bit of CTE stuff that adds up to about $400,000 there, all one-time investments. COVID support, we're calling it. So currently we have expanded the health repair educators to full-time positions in all the elementary schools. This will continue that for one more year. And then some other small fees and contracts maintaining for another year there. And then lastly, the tapering contingency, our reserves, board-specified reserves of 3% and 4%, that's about a $2 million increase there. So with the other funds, we have a one-time reduction in, there's a fund balance that's in the food service fund. This is a reduction in the transfer. So referencing the transfer, it's ongoing in the transfer side, but this is recognizing that we're going to short that transfer a little bit, but only on a one-time basis.
The only asterisk is by custodial equipment. Why is there an asterisk there?
Oops, back up. It says slight rounding in little teeny words down in the corner there. I got to make it add up right unless, so then, yeah, it did round a little bit. It bugs me when the numbers don't add up right.
But we're glad about that.
I don't want to put too many decimals or, you know, whatever on there. Preschool fund, so same kind of thing, the ongoing transfer, this is just a reduction in the transfer on a one-time basis to utilize some grant funding that's coming in. And then the technology fund, replacing high school computer labs. So these are PCs and Macs that are end of life at the school, so there's replacing them. So little summary here, 16 million projected fund balance available, using math, 13.6 of that. So there's still a little bit available in one-time resources projected. So the notable items in the other funds, so food service, here we are. The transfer for inflation on the food and consumables, we have built in a 50 cent increase in meal prices. The overall plan is built on coming back to a paid model, although I have heard that there is bipartisan support at the federal level to continue that for one more year. So that's hopeful that that will continue because it is great for the food service program, great for kids, it's way more efficient in the lunch lines for moving kids through the lines and not having to collect dollars and all that. So hopefully that'll carry forward, but at least we've built the plan, call it on a worst-case scenario, that that federal funding doesn't follow through. Technology fund, again, referencing the one-time transfer for the computer labs, cap reserve, the ongoing transfer for bus replacement program. And then in operations and technology fund, so this is using some of the fund balance that's available in there. We did this in the current year, but planned maintenance projects, portables at Meadowlark so as that school is exceeding its capacity. We need some portables out there. Food service software implementation, so this is the back of the house, you know, menu planning and inventory and things like that. Capital project staff transition, so this is as we wind up one-bond program and look to the future for capital investments, a little transition year there. And then some battery backup systems that are in IT closets out in schools. Those batteries, like the batteries on your phones and any rechargeable thing, kind of die over time and need to be replaced. So summary of some highlights here, $17 million committed for staff compensation, 12.5 million committed to a laundry list of school staffing programs, instructional materials and student support, 4.3 million for facility improvements, custodial services and building maintenance, 2.2 million to address inflation, and 1.5 million for software upgrades, IT equipment and support. Next steps, I'm a little behind in my pieces of paper. So legislative session still has a few weeks left, ends on May 11th. They have lots of work that they can do and hopefully some work that they won't do. We haven't got a school finance act yet. That usually comes pretty late in the game. I will say that there are limited options for additional funding improvements with the current year inflation rate. They had to dial back a little bit on what they were hoping to do in the current year so that they would have resources in the following year. Definitely there's potential for unfunded mandates coming through the legislature. So we will have a public budget input session on May 24th. So this is before the board meeting. So the idea being that the complete proposed budget, the big document, will be attached to the agenda and the community can look at that and reference it and react to the proposed budget that's presented. Then also on the 24th, we'll have a study of that. And then June 14th, tentative adoption planned.
So, Bill, assuming this schedule holds up, and I know that's a reasonable assumption, I think, there's been some thought about changing our June meetings so that we could meet earlier in June and end, have our last board meeting not be the last Tuesday in June. So I just want to put that out there as something we might want to talk about, but it looks like we might be able to do that and I'm hoping maybe in May we can figure that out so we can, because I think the budget presentation is the one thing that would prevent us from being able to do that. And I don't know what else is coming up on the calendar, but I just want to put that out there for consideration.
So.
So we would meet the first Tuesday in June and not the last Tuesday in June, I think is, is that the?
So the first and third instead of second and fourth? As opposed to just canceling the fourth, which has been the?
Potentially. So I would just like to think about that and we could talk about it at another meeting, but I just wanted to put that out there as a possibility. And sometimes we've gone to the very end of June to get a budget done, but in the last few years, we haven't had to do that. And it just seems like with this schedule, we might be able to accommodate that. So I just want to put that out there as a possibility. I think people are generally thinking that board meetings are at the end of June, people aren't paying attention and we should have most of our work done by then anyway. So just like I said, Rob, we can add it to a conversation later, but I just wanted to bring it up as something we could think about.
I think we'd be all for that, right? Provided that everything is where we could be, if we could move things up a little bit, I think that, you know, we'd certainly support that.
So board members, any other questions? Thanks, Bill. I'm Kitty.
Yeah, I'm just curious how much we would project to save in fuel by using, converting to electric buses? Like, do we have an idea of for each bus, we spend X amount?
All of it.
Pardon? But we're not doing it all at the same time. That's what I'm curious about. Like how, yeah, how much money is that?
I'm sure we can figure out a calculation on that, what the difference is between charging a bus, which takes something, versus the fuel for it.
I'm just curious, don't go to too much trouble for that. I thought if you had an idea of, oh yeah, for each bus, we.
I'm sure, there's probably a.
There's got to be some like.
The bus company has something.
X number of gallons.
Sure, yeah.
And translates to cost as the price of fuel changes.
Just a quick question on the portables at Meadowlark. How many are we getting at Meadowlark?
Is it two? One or two? We'll have to get back to you on that. We'll have to get back to you on that.
I don't remember.
Since we're one to web, what is a computer lab used for in high school? I'm trying to.
I can answer that, Bill. It's more for our, like, graphic arts programs, our CTE programs, where the industry standard might be Mac, or you would need just, you would need just a standalone machine that couldn't be totally cloud-based. I would say that Andrew and his team have done a phenomenal job on transferring many of our CTE programs over to cloud-based applications that kids need to do to be able to do the work, think AutoCAD, think, you know, some of those other technical programs. But we did make a decision, and in some of the, in some of these labs, they tried out the web-based application, it just wasn't fast enough, too clunky, was kind of delays, and it was preventing the kids from doing what they need to do. So, I mean, I think eventually, over time, it will all be cloud-based, but until that point in time, we feel like if we want kids to get ready for industry certification exams with industry, industry-grade and industry-quality materials, that we need to make that investment.
Yeah, it's not the computer lab of 15 years ago of banks of computers, yeah.
Anyone else, board members? Well, thanks, Bill. Thanks, Rob.
Do we have to gavel out?